All right. Thank you, everybody, and welcome to the August 10th, 2021 Planning and Zoning Commission Meeting for the Town of Waterford. Just a few quick things as we get started. This is a web-based call that is being audio and video recorded. A recording of the video will be available within 24 hours and will be posted to the Town of Waterford's Planning Department website. To ensure good sound quality, the default rule for the meeting is that everyone will remain on mute unless they are speaking. If an attendee creates an audio or visual disruption, the Zoom moderator may place them on mute or remove them from the meeting if the disruption continues. We appreciate your attendance at the meeting. Should you have any questions about the process, you may call our staff at 860-444-5813 between the hours of 8:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m., Monday to Friday. And with that, Mark will do a quick roll call and we'll get started.
Greg Massad.
Here.
John Baschel.
Here.
Ken Petrini.
Here.
Tim Bleesdale.
Here.
Karen Barnett.
Here.
And Joe DeBono. Not here. Okay, good. We have a call.
Okay, great. Since we have all five members of the commission, we don't have any appointment of alternates. We don't have any here anyway tonight. So that's number one. Number two is approval of the July 13th meeting minutes. Anybody want to make a motion?
I'll move that we approve those minutes.
Move to approve the minutes by Tim. I'll second it. Oh, in favor approving the July 13th meeting minutes? Hi.
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 I'm gonna abstain. I wasn't here.
Right, Ken?
Hi.
Hi. So four to nothing to approve the July 13th meeting minutes. Moving on to number three. Abby, what do we have for receipt of applications?
Correct. So this is the receipt of PL 21-10, the request of the Town of the Waterford Utility Commission for municipal improvement in accordance with Section 824 of the Connecticut General Statute for Communication and Tenet, located on an existing water tower with support ground equipment on property located at 861 Vauxhall Street Extension, and it's in order for receipt.
Okay, that's the only application?
That's the only incoming application tonight.
Okay, great. Moving along to item number four, application review. What do we have there?
So the first item is again the review of PL 20-10, which we just read in. And this is described here. I'm going to go ahead and do a quick description for the Waterford Utility Commission on equipments would be affected by this proposed improvement. And also with us tonight is Mark Gorka from the State of Connecticut. And he, if there's any questions on the particulars of the radio system that's being proposed or any of the equipment to be installed, he can certainly answer those questions. So essentially what we're looking at is a, let's see, I can actually share my screen and pull that up for you. Now, just a second. All right. All right. So what we're looking at here is the installation of equipment on top of the Vauxhall Street water tower. This is a municipal property that has some equipment on the ground today. But what is being proposed, and you can see the existing clearing limit sort of shown in the site plan that was attached here, is bumping that clearing back, installing some chain link fencing, and then installing a utility building and propane tanks to house state radio equipment and the associated required, you know, required equipment to run state emergency radio systems, as well as a generator that would be shared with the Town of Waterford on an emergency basis. So we're getting sort of an upgrade to the equipment that the utility commission has available for that site. Is in partnership with the state being able to locate equipment on top of the tower. There's been some significant back and forth with the state over the course of, say, more than, more than a year. And that back and forth has led to a draft agreement that will go before the Board of Selectmen and together with the report of this commission to satisfy the requirement for 824. So it'd essentially be a license for the State of Connecticut to use the water tower to, to, to improve the coverage for the emergency radio system for the states in this region. So that's, that's the, the purpose here. In addition to, you know, improving state operations, as I mentioned, the, the town would have the benefit of some space within the proposed building that the state would install. And so that would, that would give some better area to house equipment for the utility commission that were in terms of tower controls. And then again, that generator use is another great benefit that the town would receive through, through this project. So I don't know, Mark, if you have anything that you'd like to say about it, but the, the fact that the building is being erected, the tank is being installed and the areas being expanded, the improvement itself qualified under 824 for commission review. Sure. If there are any questions or... So Greg, I think you're on mute.
Sorry, I was the one that was talking. I was saying, Mr. Gorka, we can't hear you if you're speaking. So you couldn't hear me. You have anything to add? Or does anybody have any questions?
I found a way to turn off the mute. I can just add real quick, the the cover, additional coverage by adding those antennas will help improve the Connecticut Land Mobile Radio Network, primarily used by the Connecticut State Police, but also we've opened it up to municipalities and public safety partners within Connecticut. We currently have over 100 MOUs with municipalities and organizations that support public safety. So it's definitely growing and this will benefit many, many people. Additional antennas would help cover 395 between Exits 2 and 4. There's a weak area out there, plus areas in Waterford that are weak on our system and also down near Milestone.
Okay. Could you just give us your title and position with the state for the record too, please?
I am the Mark Gorka. I am the grants and contract specialist for the Division of Statewide Emergency Telecommunications within the Department of Emergency Services and Public Protection.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions for Mr. Gorka or for Abby? John's shaking. He said no. What, Tim?
I know.
Ken?
No, it seems pretty straightforward.
Karen?
I have no questions.
Okay. Anyone want to make a motion?
Sure. It's John, John Baschel. Move that the commission approve the planning and zoning CGS 824 application, PL 21-10, for the installation of the communication antenna located on the existing water tower with the support ground equipment by adopting the findings 1 and 2 of the staff report that is dated August 4, 2021. And that we find that this proposal is consistent with the Town of Waterford's 2012 Plan of Preservation, Conservation and Development.
Any second?
I'll second that.
Motion made by John, seconded by Tim. Any discussion on that motion? Okay, all in favor of the motion made by John, seconded by Tim? Hi.
Hi. Hi.
Hi.
Everybody, okay. Five to nothing. Approve. Thank you, Mr. Gorka, for your time.
Thank you.
Have a good night. Okay, Abby, the next application?
The next application is PL 21-6, request of Walter John Senkow, owner and Safe Futures Incorporated, applicant for the subdivision of property located at 990 and 994 Hartford Turnpike.
Okay, on this particular application, I think I've stated it before, I'm the treasurer of Safe Futures Board of Directors and head of the Site Selection Committee and Building Committee for this property and this project. So I'm going to abstain from any voting on it or discussion. If somebody wants to take over the meeting, that would be great. John, would you want to take over the, the meeting for this portion?
Sure.
Okay, great. We have Ellen Bartlett here and Peter Spring still here and Kathy Vrano, who's the Executive Director of Safe Futures.
Okay, thanks, Greg. So at this point, I think we're listening, we're hearing application PL 21-6, which is the application for the subdivision of the property first, correct?
Correct.
Yes. Okay. And the applicant is here, as Greg has noted. So the floor is the applicants to describe what it is that they're seeking from the commission.
This is Peter Spring Steele here, architect. And I believe we're going to have Ellen Bartlett to address this particular application. She's a civil engineer for the project.
Okay.
Yes. My name's Ellen Bartlett with CLA Engineers. And what we've applied for is subdivision approval for a two lot division that was done back in 1976. The plans were, survey plans were done, they were filed, and one of the properties was sold. A site plan was approved on it in 2002, and we didn't realize till the title search was done that this wasn't a legal subdivision. It was never actually submitted to the town as a subdivision. So we're coming back and trying to fix that by getting subdivision approval for these two lots. They, they meet the regulations at the time in 1976, and they meet the regulations now for size, configuration, and everything, everything else required for the subdivision. So we're asking that it be approved now for what was actually done back in 1976.
Okay, thank you. I'm not sure first to see, Mark, you have any comments from the, if you want to provide from the Planning and Zoning Commission? I'm sorry, from the staff?
Right. Well, I had provided staff with the with a staff report base for, for the subdivision. Ellen is right. It does meet, or certainly didn't meet at the time that it was filed, all the requirements necessary to create lots, that this is in fact a subdivision, not a re-subdivision, and the fact that this would be the subsequent split after the first resplit was taken from this property back in 1949. So the commission is, is making a determination, at least the findings here, that this is a subdivision by, as defined by statute. Other, other than that, this is, um, pretty much to clean up something that was not done back in 76. And the lots, both lots do meet standards for, for subdivision lots in that, in that zone district.
Thank you, Mark. Do any of the members of the commission have any questions they want to pose to Mark or to the applicant?
Yeah, it's Ken Petrini. I do have, I just had one, I just had one, one quick question. Now, this is for, it's, it's public water and public sewer, correct, for both lots? That's correct. The other thing was the minimum buildable square. Now, obviously, that wasn't around back in 1976, where I, I think, I'm not sure if it's, or buildable area. I know on track two, it's not an issue, but I know track one, you know, it's a little odd shaped. How does that? How does that work? I, I mean, in general principle, I think, I'm glad that we're cleaning this up now. But how do we reconcile that part of the regulation? Obviously, I don't know if it was back then in the regulation or versus now.
Right. I took a look into that. The, the minimum buildable area, minimum buildable square, those lot design standards were not in effect at the time in 1976. What they did have to meet a minimum square, which would equal the width of the lot placed. It's a, it's a square, each side equal to the, to the, to be required width for the zone district was placed at the building line. Those do fit. So, so it, it did meet that. But as far as buildable area, buildable square, did not have to meet that at the time. They weren't, they weren't in part of our regulations back then.
Does it meet now?
It might. I, that, that, that information I don't, I don't have, but those are, those are requirements for subdivision and lot splits now. The lots are created there, so they can, they can be developed. I mean, I would, I would assume since both lots are sewed, as far as buildable, buildable area goes, they just need to demonstrate 2,500 square feet. If you, if it was to be subdivided now, that's, that's, that's your minimal buildable area.
Right, right. But the square behind the building setback line and knowing that there's the pond there, I guess. Yeah, again, I know it's semantics in, in this thing, but it kind of was already done. I'm just, I was more curious to see, knowing that it was already, you know, subdivided, that, you know, at least we're trying to make it conform as close as we can to current regulations because it's being subdivided actually now.
Right, right. But the statutes allow the commission to, and what it says is, in, in the statute, when, whenever something like this happens, when a file or a plan is filed on land records without the benefit of, of Planning and Zoning Commission subdivision approval, it's, you go by the standards that were in effect at the time the plan was filed.
Okay.
Okay, not now. So when, when it was filed, you know, it, it met all the requirements to be actually the I-1 zone district, which is what was designated back in 76, including the bill, including the minimum square.
And I just want to say, I did talk to Abby about this earlier today, and I want to appreciate, I appreciate, Mark, what you did. I think in your summary of the whole thing was really, really, really done well.
Thank you.
Tim or Karen, do you have any questions?
No questions.
No questions.
All right. And Greg has recused himself from the matter. So at this point, not having any further questions for the applicant or for the staff, I'll, I guess I will entertain a motion by one of the members.
Sure. I'll, I'll move that we approve subdivision application in PL-21-6, a two lot subdivision located at 90994 Hartford Turnpike and adopt the findings A through D of our staff report that's dated July 27, 2021.
Second.
If any further discussion on the motion in the second?
I'll second.
And any, any further discussion? Not hearing any. I'll now take a vote on the motion. All in favor? I?
I.
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 And motion is accepted four to zero with one recused, that being Chairman Massad. Okay, that's now, we can move to the next application review item, item number four, application PL 21-7. And that is the request of Walter John Senkow, owner, Safe Futures, Inc., applicant for site plan approval to locate a business office and classrooms at 994 Hartford Turnpike I-G Zone in accordance with Sections 11 and 22 of the zoning regulations and as shown on plans entitled Safe Futures, Inc., 994 Hartford Turnpike, Waterford, Connecticut. Action required by 9221. At this point, again, I'll turn it over to the applicant to provide any further discussion regarding the application.
Okay. Again, my name is Ellen Bartlett with CLA Engineers. The site is, it's located on the west side of Route 85. It's a parcel that was previously used as a a Christmas tree farm. That helps people get oriented. The application is for a 21,800, 600 square foot freestanding office building for the Safe Futures. Can we go see? Okay, Abby, there was a colored drawing. Do we have that one now or we? There it is. This shows the proposed building. It shows the parking in relationship to the building, and it shows that the light green is all the area that will be disturbed and reestablished with vegetation. And I do want to address one matter right up front. Our application said that there were no blips from the natural diversity database for this property. And there were not when we first looked at it, but they update this map every six, six months. And in June, they added a blip. Previously, the endangered area just followed the Jordan Brook, and it didn't come across Route 85 in our area. But since then, they've added, added an area that comes across 85. It includes the pond, the existing pond that's located on this site. So if this application is approved, we will be submitting it up to DEP for their review and comment. We usually do that after approvals because the plans aren't changing, and we submit them with the registration for the construction stormwater permit registration. But we don't need to do that for this project because it's under five acres of disturbance. So we will just submit it directly to the natural diversity database at DEP. And if they have any concerns, they'll address them. But the stormwater system for this site has been designed to provide for no increase in flows from the site. There is a large forebay that you can see to the south of the proposed building and then a, a stormwater basement that it goes to before it empties out into the existing pond that was built as part of the developing, development of the neighboring property. It's half on our property and half on theirs. And it's been designed so that up to and including the 50-year storm, there is no stormwater leaving our stormwater system. And in a hundred-year storm, there's only 0.3 CFS actually leaving our stormwater system and entering, entering that basin. So it, it would be hard for me to imagine that we're having any kind of an impact on whatever may be living in, in that, that existing pond because we're treating the water so completely and nothing goes to it except in the 100-year storm. So I wanted to dress that right up front because that was a mistake we made in the application because we had checked it previously and we were not, there was not anything on our site, but right now there is. So we will have to be submitting this to DEP. But we normally do that after approvals in place because they want to see the final plan. We went before the design review board earlier today and received their approval with one condition. My landscape plan shows some rather large drugs right adjacent to the building instead of foundation trucks. So I have to change that. We have a spruce, several of them, right across the, the eastern side of the building, and that, that's clearly a mistake. So we will revise that before we submit final plans for recording. And now maybe I'll pass this to Peter to talk to you about the building. It's, it's a really nice looking building he's designed.
Oh, Peter Spring Steele, architect. I'm going to wait for Abby to scroll up here. What we're proposing is a one-story building, 21,600 square feet. Abby, if we could go back to the floor plan, maybe? And it's a simple rectangular building in floor plan, but in, in the third dimension, as you'll see, it's a little bit more interesting. And as mentioned by Ellen, we did go before Architectural Review Board and really didn't have any negative comment. In fact, they were fairly positive. There's main entrance to the building here, and then there are several other entrances on the building that serve various, I'll call them accessory functions to the Safe Futures operation. When you come in the front of the building, there's a central lobby waiting area. That's probably going to be a secure space. Then, then going up on the sheet in the green area, here are the Safe Futures office areas. Then to the south of the lobby or down on the page, I should say, there is a training facility. And that has its own entrance off the front and off the side because that may be used in off-hours for various training functions. Then you'll see to the left, there is a purple shaded area, and that's a criminal justice function. There are mostly offices in there, some meeting rooms. There's a mock courtroom to help assist clients when they do testimony. And then going back up on the sheet in the center of the building, we have a, say, central skylit area that's kind of the knuckle of the building that all, all various functions spin off of. And then going further up on the page, we have the Peach area, and that's a collaboration where we have partner agencies, and they do projects and have their offices there and meeting rooms as well. And then in the back, upper left corner, we have a staff area. So there's a cafe, staff area, mechanical room, gym, computer lab, and some bathrooms. And then in the lower left-hand corner, we have a children's area, and basically Riverfront Children's Center will be running this facility. And in there, we have some classrooms for children of domestic abuse victims and the clients. And we also have a reading room and some office areas. That particular function has a door out the back that will lead to a kind of a secure recreation area for the kids. And that'll be fenced in, which you can see on this drawing here. There's also a, another entrance to that part of the building. Near the end of the driveway, there's a drop-off area. And kids would be dropped off here right at those doors. And then there's room to pull in and then pull right out. And if you go down along the sidewalk on that side of the building further, their judicial, criminal justice area has its own entrance as well, which shares the training room. And the sidewalk goes further down to a waiting area, and you can see we've written in there, seat bus pickup. So we're, our expectation here is that the seat buses will be able to come into the facility, pick up and drop off folks that are, need public transportation. And Ellen will go into how she's designed the parking and driveways to accommodate that. If you want to scroll down to the next one, Abby. Here we have the exterior elevations of the building. Up at the top, we have the front main entrance elevation where you have your training room on the left and the Safe Futures offices on the right. It's kind of a traditional-looking New England building with cable dormers and, and porticoes and a hip roof that goes along the front of the building, and then it also goes down the left side of the building, which is the next elevation down. And there's those additional entrances there. We're using a lot of traditional New England-type architecture, double-hung windows. We're going to do asphalt shingle roof, clapboard siding, and then some mixtures of other textures. We've got some shingle, and we've got some stone veneer as well. On the rear south elevation, what you're seeing there is the hip roofs, but then to the left, there's a flat roof section. And then there's a clear story roof that pops out of that, that brings that light into that center core. And you can see that also. And you can see that also in the bottom elevation as well. So those two bottom elevations are the ones that you really don't see much of unless you're walking around the back of the site. The, the other two are the, the ones that you'll see as you come in to the parking areas and drop offs. And then if we go down one more, you'll see the three D renderings of the building. So the lower one is giving you an idea of what you're going to see. Those are the two facades you're going to see when you come into the building. The upper one does the same thing, but from ground level. So you can have good recognition of where the entrances are to this building. And the interesting parts of the building are definitely facing the front arrival area. I don't think you see a lot of this building from Route eighty five. But what you do see will be these areas mostly. So Ellen, I'll flip it back to you if you like.
Okay, scroll back up to the site plan. Okay. This one will work. The parking lot has been designed so that a, a seat bus can drive into the site, wrap around through the parking lot, stop at that bench in the front, pick up or drop off passengers and then head back out. So we've looked at all the radiuses, we've driven the truck through with, with the program we have so that we can put a bus in there and drive it through. And so that, that's a feature that was very much wanted is that we'd be able to get the, the buses in and out without having any difficulty turning around. A school bus could also do it, though I don't see that happening. But a school bus could drive through there also. We've got eighty parking spaces, which is what's required by the zoning regulations. And it was right in line with what Safe Futures thought they needed for their parking on their busiest day. They have people coming at all different times during the day. There's no real peak flow. Some people, they arrive between eight thirty and ten in the morning, their staff. A lot of the agencies come in, made me come in for, for two hours at any time during the day. Clients tend to come in between ten and three. So it's, it's a constant flow in and out without really a peak flow during, during the rush hours, which is definitely a plus. So commission, have any questions about the site plan? Oh, we did go to Wetlands. We had gone to Wetlands for the previous application. We had submitted for Yost. They had a manufacturing building there. Kind of the same configuration, except a lot less parking. But it had a loading area and the drainage stormwater treatment system was, was the same as is proposed for this project. So we went back to Wetlands. They took a look at it and said, yeah, the old permit is fine. And they just recommended that all the conditions of the original Wetlands approval be part of this application as well. The project was submitted to DOT. We have their, we addressed the review comments. Now we gave us the second letter that said that we need to submit the town's approval before they'll give their final approval. But that's all we're, we're needing at this point is the town's approval for DOT. I think we've got all our approvals in place. So if the commission has any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
I just have a question just about the, some of the use of the space, in particular, the classroom use. The way that was described sounded, it sounded in some, some ways almost like a daycare. I don't know much about what you folks, what you, what services you provide. So maybe if you can just expand a little bit on what the use of that space, that section of the building is going to be for.
So maybe Catherine, I'm not sure if you would like to answer that one.
Yeah, I think I can answer that. So we're looking at many times clients come in to meet with the prosecutor, to meet with law enforcement, to meet with advocates, multiple agencies in one location. And they can't have their children with them. So we want to be set up different age groups, different rooms that the children have activities to do, children's riverfront. We're looking at grants together for them, but also to set up some virtual training rooms or educational rooms. Adult Ed is working with us. Many times our clients can't go to a public, like to Adult Ed to partake in classrooms because of safety reasons. So those type of things would also be held in those rooms.
Okay, so, so it wouldn't be used as a facility where somebody drops off their child in the morning, goes off someplace to do some other function, whether it's to work or whatever it might be. And then comes back and then picks their child up at the end of the day like you would with a normal daycare type operation.
Yeah, not a full daycare. No, there may be times where children would be there all day, but there would be specific reasons.
Okay, great. Thank you.
I had a question, maybe kind of obvious goes off what John just said. What is Safe Futures?
So Safe Futures, our, we used to be called the Women's Center of Southeastern Connecticut. We changed our name about twelve years ago. We're a nonprofit agency, a member of the Connecticut Coalition Against Domestic Violence. And we're the only provider of domestic violence, sexual assault, stalking and trafficking in all of southeastern Connecticut. So right now, our main office is downtown New London and one in downtown Norwich. Safe Futures would not be housing, will not be our shelter location or any housing properties at this site. We have those separate sites. So we have a domestic violence shelter, emergency shelter for victims fleeing abuse. We have transitional living programs, both onsite in, in J Street and offsite scattered site, permanent supportive housing onsite in Norwich and scattered site and multi use home for victims dealing with domestic violence and substance abuse and mental health. So we're also in all of the courthouses. We have advocates in three courthouses working on arraignments with victims right after an arrest. We're thirty five percent of your criminal docket or domestic violence cases. This past year, we worked with nine thousand seven hundred seven victims in all of southeastern Connecticut. And you can see all these people behind me at Philomena's. That was our two day strategic planning session just before COVID hit. Where the experts out of California who started the family justice centers back in the early two thousands came and did the community strategic planning session. And that's where it was determined, I guess I always thought that we would be in downtown in London. It was really determined that is not a central location. And everybody was looking at Waterford. So our building committee, on which Greg is on, we started looking for a central location. And this is a great spot very between three ninety five, ninety five. It's really a half hour to, to anyone. Waterford Police Department will have their own office in there. There will be other law enforcement sharing space in there, but they will have a hub in there being the host town.
Will there be a need to connect the, and I don't know who would answer this question, but will there be a need to connect the judicial building that's there with this building for any reason or would they be separate?
Um, just virtually.
Okay.
Connecting would be virtually. Many victims are, I worked in court for Safe Futures for twenty years. And it's a very intimidating place for a victim to go. There will be prosecutors there. There will be other court personnel, DCF. So it's that wraparound service of working with a victim because right now only two percent of cases, criminal cases are adjudicated in trial. Whereas with wraparound services, that usually increases to about fifty percent of your cases going to trial with, with support to victims. Yeah.
I did have a few more questions, but I can let other people, if they have other questions, they can, I don't know what the process.
I just have one additional question and then either Ken, you can pick it up again, or Karen, or Tim can jump in. You'd mentioned that most of the clients of, of the service kind are there between ten and three. Are there actual set hours that the facility is open?
Well, our, our office right now, our main office is where we alternate into between eight AM and five or six. But that's just the walk in offices. We also have, you know, we have twenty four hour service at all of our shelters, our hotlines. So this particular office would be mostly daytime. There would be maybe some nighttime groups going educational because one thing we also will do is training all of the community partners on a regular basis, working together. So it's not like we're open from eight to four and you, everyone's coming in at eight and leaving at four. That, that doesn't happen.
Yeah, I think you answered my, my question or my concern, really isn't a concern, was how were emergency services handled? And it sounds, the answer is it's handled through the shelters, not through this facility.
Correct. We will also keep our satellite office in New London and Norwich for walk in crisis out of those, of those areas. But this is a great, a great spot for the multiple agencies working together and referring clients for each other's services.
Okay, I, I don't have any further questions. So Karen or Tim, do you have anything, any questions?
This is Karen. I have one question. Looking at the driveway for the facility, what are the sightlines? I know the traffic comes pretty quick on eighty five and just curious how much sightlines they'll have in either direction. Make sure that, you know, buses and cars can come and go.
All right, we did go out, send our surveyors out to shoot the sightlines there. And they have over a thousand feet in both directions of sightline, which is more than what's required by DOT based on the speeds out there. So sightlines are very good. It's a nice straight stretch of the road and you can, you can see over a thousand feet, neither direction.
Great, thank you.
Tim, do you have any questions?
I know Karen actually asked what I was going to ask is about the, the sightline. So I'm covered.
All right, Ken, back to you.
I'm glad you asked that question. A great question now. I know the other businesses and I don't know what the traffic, I know these, there's eighty spaces, but the traffic generation. So that, so DOT didn't have a requirement for any sort of turn lanes or deceleration lanes for this site. It just seems knowing eighty five, you know, it's a very obviously busy road at a time of day that this will be used. It's, I know DOT, you said they've already reviewed and yes, so.
They have reviewed and signed off and they did not ask for any, any extra lanes on this site. And they, we submitted to them what we submitted to you, breakdown of when the different agencies, the different employees are coming. And it is really spaced out over the day that it's not like everyone comes in at eight o'clock and leaves at five. So they, they did not have any big concerns. They were happy with the sightlines. That's, that's for sure.
Just, just two more questions, at least at the moment. One is the like HVAC utility locations and where they will be on the site or in the site plan. And also, if you could address the lighting, you know, what type of lighting? And I'm just looking at the, the neighbor there. I don't know what that business or building is. But obviously there'll be people here at nighttime. So they'll need adequate light for just to be able to walk around and see what's going on out here.
So why don't I start off with HVAC? If you recall in the drawings, there's a flat section of roof in the back that you can't really see from any of the driveway areas or the street. And that, that area is more than sufficient to house all the HVAC equipment and have it well hidden from anybody. The lighting, you'll also see on the architectural plans that there are goose neck type fixtures that are mounted on the side of the building. And those are there to light up the sidewalk areas on the three sides of the, those four sides, there's some sidewalks. And so they're pretty close together on the, on the building walls of the building. So that takes care of the entrances and the sidewalks. And then Ellen can address the driveways and parking areas.
Yes, we have pretty, pretty much standard looking fixtures for the parking lot lighting. They're all fully shielded. And we did a photometric plan of this, of the lighting to show that there was no trespass of light from the site into the neighbor's property because that is very important. But yeah, all the lighting is, is, is located so that it's, it's going to provide what we need, but not, not impact the neighbors.
Now, is it, okay, thank you. The, the only other thing is, is there going to be any gas on the site at all or is it all electric? And, you know, like all the utility equipment and site's going to be electric, no gas or anything like that onsite?
I, well, as far as the mechanical equipment goes, we have not selected mechanical equipment at this point. I'm not sure, Ellen, if there's gas in Route eighty five or that we're bringing into the site.
There is gas in eighty five. I haven't shown it going on site because I'm not aware at this point whether you need it or not. But there is available. It goes right in front of the site. So gas could be extended onto the site if needed.
That's all I have.
Okay. Can I, can I mention one thing or am I out of term? I, I did want to mention that the, the National Alliance for Hope International Family Justice Center was here in June, July, actually, to see the property. And they're very excited that this is a national model. That this Waterford property will be looked at as a national model compared to many of the family justice centers are set up in municipal buildings where victims and collaborative partners really don't want to go to downtown and to those locations any longer. So it's really looked at, will be looked at as a national model. So we're pretty excited about that.
Great. Mark, you have any comments you want to make on your July twenty, or on your report?
Sure. I submitted your, submitted staff report for the commission's review. Pretty much everything in the discussion portion of that report, we've covered tonight. However, I would like to add within the findings, finding letter D that the Waterford Design Review Board has submitted a positive recommendation of this, this application with a condition and that condition I'll add to the conditions listed. So condition number two is that the landscape plan accurately reflect the foundation planting right. That was, that was the condition that the design review board wanted, wanted to add in. And also there's a third condition relative to the NDBB submittal that the applicant provides documentation that that NDBB submittal is done prior to filing the plans on the land records. That we get a copy for the file of the submittal to NDBB. So with that, here's a modification to the motion with conditions one through three and to adopt findings A through D of the staff report. And that's modifications.
And Mark, if, if for some reason the ND, Natural Diversity Database review should require some modification to the site plan, that's incorporated within that condition three, that's what you're intending by that?
No, I think condition three would be just at the, prior to recording the plan on the land records, the submittal would be required if NDBB were to come back with substantial change that would be more than what might be administratively approvable. Then there would have to be a site plan modification that would come back through during that, that extent. But I think we would be hopeful that whatever would, would happen would be something that we could handle as, as, as an administrative change to the site plan as construction was, were to be getting underway.
Right, right. I'm only asking that the, so that, that the submittal be documented in the file prior, prior to filing the plans. uh, in the file prior, prior to filing the plans on the land.
Okay. Uh, with that, uh, I believe we're probably ready to hear a motion from a commission member regarding uh, this, uh, application, uh, PL 21 dash seven.
Uh, I'll take a stab at that. Uh, this is Tim. Um, I move that we approve site plan application PL 21 dash seven with, uh, condition, uh, one specified in our staff's report dated July 27th, 2021. And with the additional, uh, condition two and three that Mark just described to us. Um, and also that we adopt the findings A through C, um, set forth in the staff report of the same date. Um, with the additional finding, um, that Mark referred to as finding D related to the design review.
Thank you, Tim. Uh, is there a second?
I'll second.
All right. Uh, any further discussion on the motion in the second? Not hearing any. Uh, we'll take a vote on the motion as proposed. All in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Right, that being all the commission members, there are no opposing votes and one recusal that being the commissioner. Uh, the motion is passed. Thank you very much and congratulations and good luck.
Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you so much. We're really excited. Thank you.
Great project.
Right, great project. Okay, at this point I'll hand it back to Greg.
Great, thank you, John. Thank you, Ellen. Thank you, Peter. He was a pleasure to deal with. And thank Abby and Mark for the, all the time you put into this and in having this go through the first time. This is gonna be a great project. Um, so that's it for the applications. Now we're on to item number five correspondence. Do we have any correspondence, Abby?
I don't believe so.
Okay, so then item number six and, uh, mission business is a review of past month's ongoing projects and upcoming projects. Abby, can you give us an update on on s- some things?
Sure, yep. So we have, um, just a continuation of the conversation from our last meeting. Um, we have the, um, Pequot Apartments, the, the 40 units, building site plan on Hartford Turnpike was submitted to Inland Wetlands for review. So that came out of preliminary into their application process. Uh, Ace Hardware, um, recently had, you know, uh, absolutely. Old Benny's father recently had their, uh, grand opening celebration, August 6th through 8th. So there are some good, uh, good pictures coming out of there, but they they're underway and then very happy to be here and be in business. So that's great. Um, Gabriel's Martial Arts Studio continues to, to work toward their conversion to mixed use. Um, they maintain their class schedule and, and separation of those things, but, but they are, um, working on their construction daily. Uh, similarly, the Mango Point Office Building Construction is, is still underway and is, is carrying on. Um, site work is, is ongoing for the Willets Avenue Apartments. So that is, is still, um, still moving forward. And Hartford Healthcare, we're still in the same sort of schedule for, uh, fall, um, occupancy and then they're working on their tenant fit outs and getting all of their space, um, leased out and, and the improvements made for each of those individual tenants for that medical building. Um, other things that are potential, in terms of upcoming projects, um, we, we continue to have conversations with people about, um, sort of commercial and industrial flex space. Um, we've even had some conversations about folks creating some commercial residential live workspace. So people are starting to get a little bit creative with how to, um, develop commercial property to, to make sure that it can be adaptable, that they're able to, to take a property, um, and, and then multiple uses over time, be able to, to be supported there. So we've had a couple, um, it, up on Gurley Road, we've had some conversations, um, at the corner of Tiffany and Boston Post. So there are, you know, again, very preliminary, uh, conceptual ideas, but they are, they are out there. Um, the, uh, upcoming, there will be a public hearing, um, on August 24th on some questions relative to, uh, outdoor storage and that will, depending on the outcome of that, affect a potential application on Hartford Turnpike. Um, for a storage, uh, storage facility, self storage, uh, facility. Uh, we would anticipate, um, that the Pequot Apartments would become as soon as inland wetlands is, um, at a point of being ready to make a decision. Um, we would anticipate the Pequot Apartments application would come forward to P and Z fairly quickly after that. And then, um, we have additional, you know, inquiries and interest, um, in, certainly the, uh, the airport continues to, to be uh, in, in conversation with between prospective developers and the owner in terms of, of a potential application for, uh, warehousing there. There is, um, additional interest in a preliminary application that's just in for apartments for 284 units in seven buildings on a 35 and a half acre development right at the, the end of Crossroad on 85. So right, we're crossroad, but soon to 85 up the hill. Um, so that is uh, in, in a preliminary review with the town right now, um, and is being passed around to all the various departments. Um, and they'll be given the opportunity as well if they choose to take it to, to ask any questions. They may have a commission as they go forward. We've had some inquiries about, uh, the former Papagino site. We've had some inquiries about Webster Bank. Um, so we've been checking in with the, the development and the folks, the, uh, companies that hold those properties just to see what interests they've had and and things are moving. There are inquiries, there's nothing, uh, nothing final at this point in terms of folks moving forward, but but it is good to see some movement, um, and some questions where we hadn't seen some in a while. And then the other piece that is, has come up from a number of folks, I'd say I've probably have had five or so inquiries so far on what the commission's position will be on, um, the marijuana legislation and the allowance for retail and/or micro cultivation in Waterford. Um, very preliminary conversation as folks are preparing for the licensing conversation to begin at the state level. But they are, there, there's definitely interest out there. So that'll be something we'll discuss in the next item, but, but just so you know, we are, we are receiving those calls. And again, mostly, mostly general inquiries, nothing on a particular property, but mostly just conceptually, where is the town headed?
Okay, great. Thank you, Abby. Those are, those are helpful updates for us on the past and future projects. Keep us abreast of things. Anybody have any questions on those projects for Abby? Some, some of them she may not be able to answer because they're confidential or there's not a lot of information, just inquiries, but does anybody have any questions on?
I just had a quick question on the, the presentation of the pre-application by Clark Lane, the development. Has there been any more, uh, movement of actually submitting something or?
No, and no further discussion with staff. There hasn't been any, any update.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, so any other questions, Tim, Karen? No? Okay, so why don't we move on to item number seven, administrative review? So I had been talking with Abby about seven A and get, trying to get some updates on some of these regulation changes. And we had talked about, you know, over time, some sign changes in the, in the civic triangle, Jordan Village, adaptive reuse. We had a bunch of different issues. And, you know, it's a, it's a public hearing process and a, and a process to redo the regulation. So we were trying to maybe combine some of these together so we can do them all at once. It might be a little easier on the commission, might be a little easier on the staff, might be a little easier on the public as well to come in and talk about all the changes at once. So, uh, I asked her to give us an update on these and when we can maybe expect to maybe have drafts and act on these and put these in front of a public hearing. So if you could talk about, uh, A, that would be great, Abby.
Absolutely. So most of these actually have drafts either done or, um, are very close to being done. We've talked, uh, in the past a little bit about sign sizes in the civic triangle. Right now they're modeled after residential districts. And since we have the civic triangle now set up as a mixed use, um, environment, it really doesn't, the, the small, especially for freestanding signs, really doesn't accommodate what some of the businesses may be looking for, um, whether it's the, the renovation at the Martial Arts Studio, whether it's work that the Historical Commission wants to do in putting up new signage. Um, you know, we have other properties throughout the district that may redevelop. Um, it's, it's a pretty small area now. So that was essentially meant to make it a little bit easier for folks if they are considering opening a business in our town center, which is sort of the focus of a number of different projects. We wanted to, to give some of that freedom. Um, so that, again, that, that could come to the commission at any time. Um, you know, I think some of these things we could probably package up as, as Greg was saying, suite of sort of technical changes in the regulations that are perhaps simpler to, to review. And then some of the bigger items we could do as either standalone or a couple of nights. Um, so that's the sign sizes. Jordan Village, we had drafted regulations for that actually a while back before the pandemic. And then, um, we're just working on the design guidelines since it was proposed to adopt that as a village district under eight two J in the statutes. And so that, um, we're finalizing the design guidelines now. I would anticipate that the first meeting in September, we would, we'd have a draft for the commission to be able to review. Adaptive reuse, um, is one that is, is drafted and then Greg and I presented you with a draft. It's, we can kind of do some working meetings on it, um, but what, the question is when we wanna bring that back out to the commission. Um, there has been some interest and, and calls off and on about, uh, the Kohanzy School, which I know was, was uh, adaptive reuse is enabled, uh, potentially for that property, but there were questions about its, its actual application. And so, you know, at some point it would be good to get the timeline of, of when to at least bring that draft forward to the, the commission as a whole. Um, parking, we've talked about a little bit in terms of, um, of, of the, the number of parking spaces required, you know, required for various uses under the new legislation. Um, we are right now and, and would be in, in advance of the September meeting, um, modifying some of the language to clarify some of the standards. There's some conflicts and clarification needed, um, for gas stations and how many parking spaces are required uh, between the pumps and convenience stores and just making sure there's no confusion there. Um, and then, you know, looking at opportunities to clarify shared parking opportunities such as in um, strip mall kind of environments or where there's various commercial uses, um, as a whole, trying to figure out how we can balance the parking. So we're not overparking, uh, you know, our commercial properties to the extent that we can. So we're finalizing some of that stuff and we'll, we'll be able to get that out to the commission, um, you know, soon, soon after Labor Day. Um, site plan survey requirements, there are, um, very specific requirements in terms of T2A2 surveys currently listed in our, in our surveys or in our, in our, uh, site plan requirements. And there's been some suggestion that we may, depending on the data available for particular sites, folks may be able to um, use additional information available from the state of Connecticut with the state, with, with enough accuracy uh, to, to answer a commission question and then to, um, do appropriate design on the property without having to go back through that T2A2 process. So that's something that we are drafting and again, we would be able to have probably to the commission at the next meeting this month. Um, urban agriculture, we had had lengthy discussions on this, um, several months ago. And it, it sort of took a backseat a little bit with the marijuana legislation, make sure there wasn't a conflict between um, sort of enabling urban agriculture and then having some kind of micro processing or micro cultivation question, um, on Clark Lane. So we wanted to, to, so we, we kind of, as staff, back off of that, what we determine what some of those other elements are. Uh, but there's a question for the commission of whether you'd like to take that back up again. Mobile, uh, I'm going through this quickly, so please feel free to stop me at any point if you've got questions, um, about any of them. Okay.
The one other thing on the survey, Abby, was A2 as well as the T2.
Yep, um.
I'm new at this. I just, the, the adaptive reuse, is it kind of like for old buildings and trying to reutilize them? Is that the purpose?
Older buildings and, uh, brownfield sites were, was the way that was, was drafted. Um, and there were some question and, and contemplation over the clarity of the language in terms of if someone were redeveloping a site under that provision. What is the intensity of development that might be appropriate? And also is, is the, the, uh, language in the regulation currently, um, does it currently reflect where and how the commission believes that type of, of, um, redevelopment should be used? So there's a few, a few questions in that, that piece. Um, you know, we could certainly get that out to the commission for sort of a preliminary discussion. Um, so we can, and then that's, that's kind of ready to, to send out, at least for, for discussion purposes.
We don't have any brownstone in Waterford, do we?
We have brown hills, we do, yep.
We do, where?
The Kohanzy School is one. Um, given the age of construction of Southwest School, that's probably another. There are private ones, um, that are out there, former gas stations and then that kind of stuff that, that, yep, exist.
Hey, Ken, um, there's a section in the regulation. What section is it, Abby?
I think it's E10A.
Yeah, maybe if you wanna look at that, that, that's what the present ones are and then they'll, you know, you'll compare it to some draft proposals that'll be coming out to see what the commission thinks, but there was, there's some, you know, some, uh, vagueness in some of them. Some of them need to be tied down a little bit, but that's for the commission to decide, you know, coming up.
Um, mobile pickup windows is another one that we've discussed, um, over the course of the pandemic and whether or not the commission has an interest in adopting a more permanent regulation to enable and differentiate between drive-through operations and mobile pickups, um, to accommodate, you know, business that one business that exists in Waterford now and then inquiries that we've had from prospective developers, um, on some of the properties as to whether or not the town would have a different standard in terms of queue length requirements relative to mobile pickup. Um, so that's something for the commission to consider as well. And that was some language that we, we passed out just to start that conversation. Um, outdoor dining is accessory use. We may need to tweak our regulations to be in line with new legislation. That should be a fairly straightforward piece. We already have some outdoor dining provisions in the regulations. Um, but we do wanna make sure that we have language relative to things like, um, you know, parking conflicts, any pedestrian circulation issues. And then, um, we're finding with outdoor dining is one of the things we need to make sure we're very clear on is hours of operation and noise issues related to, to properties. Um, so we wanna make sure that our regulations cover those things and don't confuse outdoor dining and, and other forms of outdoor entertainment. Um, and we'll wanna carefully consider how that goes forward. So, so that's another one. Um, accessory dwelling units, we've discussed, um, and, and we were given kind of a draft of what would happen if we, uh, crafted the regulation to simply match the state statutes in the, in the new provisions. Um, and so that's something that we will want to circle back to now that the commission has had some time to think about it, consider a little bit, um, and go from there. Multi-family residential standards, we had, it had laid out, um, some modifications there. I know we needed to do a tweak to the parking and make sure that the unit sizes match building code. Um, and we had, there was some general consensus about that being a standard that was reasonable because the market would likely decide. Um, you know, sort of what those unit sizes wind up being. Um, and again, consistency with, with new legislation. So all of those are, are elements that are, have been discussed at, at one time or another that have been in various forms of development. And I think what we are looking for as staff is some guidance in terms of packaging these up, getting final drafts to you, getting final feedback so that, um, in the early part of the fall, we can start to come forward, as Greg said, with, um, with sort of thoughtful presentations that the public can relate to and connect with to, to move some of these things forward. Or if the consensus is not, then to take them off of the list of, of things that we are working on.
Thank you, Abby. If anybody else has any, uh, thoughts on some of the regulations that you've come across or that you see or people have talked to you about, you know, that's how some of these things have gotten, um, on the agenda. So if you have any, you know, let, uh, Abby or Mark know or me know and we can try to move them forward for the commission to, to address. So thank you for that, Abby. That's, that's a, it should be a nice package for the fall.
Is it useful, just as, as a quick question, is it useful if we package up the current status of these and provide them to the commission at least for, to pass out for the August meeting and then, and then you'll have more to sort of collectively look at to see if there is a, a schedule there? Or would you rather we hold off on that until the first meeting in September?
I, you know, my opinion is, is if, you know, if, if you can do it, I, I just don't want it to fall off the radar. That's why we're having about the agenda. If you, if, if the second meeting in August, in my opinion, is too, too quick for you, I'm fine in September. I, I just don't want it to fall off, you know, through the cracks. That's all. So I don't know what anyone else thinks, but, um, you know, the August meeting is gonna come pretty quickly in two weeks, so.
I would anticipate, not all of them would be ready by, uh, by the August meeting, but we could probably have all of them ready for the September meeting.
I'd like to have whatever you have just to see. I mean, it doesn't, wherever it's at, just, you know, just to, so I can catch up on some of the stuff that, that's already been discussed.
Excellent.
Um, just, just to add something, this is Karen. I, I agree that I think we should kind of break these into more manageable, like groupings if we can. I, I think it's a great idea to, to create a summary. But I think when we go to address it, we might want to, um, as someone said earlier, kind of put a few things that are, you know, alike together and so that people can manage the, I don't wanna jump around from topic to topic in one night.
Yep. That makes sense. And what we can do when we package up at least the current status of everything, knowing that it requires some more discussion and some tweaking from the commission, um, we'll, we'll sort of do it in a table of contents in an order that would be a suggested grouping for how to approach these with Um we'll we'll sort of do it in a table of contents in an order that would be a suggested grouping for how to approach these with the commission and the public as we take them for more formally.
Okay, any other questions, comments on on A? Okay, B, timeline?
So um our our consultant is 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 basically finalizing the draft of the Affordable Housing Plan. And I know we had asked him to sort of hold off until the fall in terms of subsequent presentations. Um. But what we do want to do is probably start to schedule which meetings we will plan to have him come back and and present um the draft plan. So he is, he's probably providing that to staff for our review. We'll do a quick, um if there's any, you know, sort of technical pieces or things that we think need to be. Tweak before it comes to the commission, but my guess is there's not going to be a huge amount. So um, you know, what we'd like to do is. As soon as that conversation with him, it happens, we'll send out a draft plan to the commission so that you can start reviewing it. And then we need to schedule a time for him to to come back. Um suggested meetings would be September fourteenth or twenty eighth for a conversation and. Feedback on the plan, uh at least on the on the draft plan and he tweets that the commission would have, um Glenn would go ahead and. And make and then we need to schedule a public presentation of the plan and make sure that we're getting up, you know, our our it's a public engagement. Reenacted. So we we need to make sure that we're not missing um, missing that step. So in September, the fourteenth and the twenty eighth are our meetings. I gave those to Glenn and didn't know if there was a particular one you preferred. Um he's checking his schedule and we'll we'll see which one works out. But um I just wanted to put it on the radar that one of those meetings, we should at least try to have him back. Um and hopefully one of those will work with his his schedule as well.
Then we get his, then we get his availability and let us know at the next meeting and. In August, we could pick February, pick the September meeting. Is that good for everyone?
As long as, as long as most folks are going to be around, I think that's that's the biggest thing. So we will we'll get uh get confirmation from them. Okay.
Okay, and then see see the timeline to discuss the cannabis legislation.
So I know that that, you know, we had thought through um summer, folks are are not paying perhaps as much attention um in the public. As as you know, again, it's back to school, it's it's a tumultuous time for both wanting, coming to and back and then uh from vacations and and all that kind of stuff. So we want to make sure that people are going to have a thoughtful conversation on the marijuana legislation, that we do that. At a time when folks are going to be available to to give opinion and and participate in that discussion. Um, you know, I'm sure as many of you have read, um, you know, the the discussion concerning the allowance uh for. Uh for sales, for retail sales and for micro cultivation really does come down to P and Z unless there is a. Petition for referendum. And so and and of those, if that were to go forward, the more restrictive um decision would would likely hold. Um but in this particular case, I have not heard wind of of any referendum discussion. There may be out there, but I have not heard about it. So I have a feeling that this is going to be a P and Z um discussion. The Economic Development Commission has had, has had a preliminary discussion about making a recommendation to the commission. They have not. Carried that forward yet. I would imagine they're going to discuss it again um at their their meeting on Thursday. But they, their role is purely advisory and they do, they absolutely recognize that. But you may, you may have some correspondence from the Economic Development Commission coming to you relative to the legislation. Um, as I said, you know, we have had inquiries um. And, you know, the commission will need to at some point. I think, you know, again, this is a timeline for. When would you like summary information? Is there a particular set of scenarios you would like us to carry out? Or or sort of play out um and and think about. So so for example, opportunities would be a moratorium for one or. One or both uses, prohibition of one or both uses. General, you know, sort of allowance of of one or both uses or kind of restricted um allowance. So are there particular areas of town, zone, districts, um proximity to to other facilities? If you are considering um allowing the uses, you know, where would those potentially be? So we can do a write-up and kind of give you these options and we'll we'll give, you know, kind of a better, a better assessment. But what we wanted to do is make sure we bring it to you when you're you're ready to kind of engage in that work because I do think it's going to garner some public interest.
All right, Abby, are we getting any um guidance or will there be any guidance, any model rules, anything from the Connecticut? You know, towns and cities, the league of towns and cities?
So I haven't, I I know that um I already have heard that Kama is is working. On, you know, sort of a summary of options in some some general language. And I think what folks are doing now, it seems like the folks are sort of quick to do one of. Of two things. One is to put a moratorium on, or the folks who are going to say no are are saying no quickly. I have not heard of a timeframe for any draft language right now. So so no, I don't, I don't have any timeframe or what that might include. I will ask, I mean, I can certainly ask Rob if you know if anything has come out through Kama. I have certainly, I've not heard anything on that through um CCA.
Okay.
I have one question.
Yeah, but go ahead, Karen.
Sorry, just one quick thing. On the um micro cultivation, we're talking about like an indoor facility?
I believe it can be indoor and outdoor. It's that two thousand square feet to ten thousand square feet operation. And there are specific parameters in the legislation about um volume of production and what can be sold.
Okay, I I feel like they're kind of, you know, one or the other, but okay.
Okay, um, anybody else have any comments on this? Abby, what's the timeframe where things have to be done or we lose our ability to to do something?
So licensing, um, I believe, so I believe that the state is going to take up. Their licensing requirements in January, they're going to start reviewing what those, how it looks like and all that kind of stuff. And then um and that is what July one of twenty two, I believe, is is when the the actual sales and then whatnot would be. Enabled. So our, um and and forgive me because my, I want to make, let me go back and check the days to make sure I'm I'm clear with that. Because in my, in my head, when I was thinking about this conversation, I was thinking that it's something that the commission should really take up in. In September, early October, um and and be done by the new year so that when the licensing discussions are going on at the state, that we're we're prepared and already have an answer for folks.
Okay, now, i- is it something that if people apply for a license, they would have to have the location already known?
I'm not sure what the state process is going to be yet. I imagine there will be some review that says. Similar to liquor licensing, that you have to have zoning compliance in order to um, in order to apply. Or by the time it's time to be approved. I don't know where in the approval process that will happen, but I believe that there will be a zoning compliance component to it.
Okay, does anybody have an issue with maybe um seeing what the Economic Development Commission says? Uh for the next meeting and then getting a real timeline down at that meeting for September, October? Because if it is, i- if they do have to have zoning compliance before they start to apply in January, then we we really do want to have. Our ducks in a row if 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 it's going to be allowed or or where it's going to be allowed.
And we'll we'll provide um, you know, some of the OPM guidance and then just sort of a a summary of possible actions and timeframes associated with each at the next meeting. Because that's a pretty simple thing for us to write up and then at least give you an idea of of where things are headed.
Okay, great.
Quick question, just in general about um, can we get some sort of information from, you know. The the local town in in Massachusetts and what what they had for their regulations? Just to understand, is it, has there been any impact studies or any kind of studies shown of what this does to the area? And, you know, from that standpoint?
We can certainly take a look at at how things have have gone in other states. The the legislation in each state is is slightly different and so um. You know, we can be, so apples to apples may not be, may not be the thing, but um but we can certainly talk about it. You know, there's going to be. I think some very strong opinion on both sides of allow or not um relative to this issue. And so, um, you know, certainly there's, you know, we can take a look at what other other communities have done in other states.
Yeah, just reading through the the package that you sent, I mean, it's just a lot, it's pretty loosey goosey, I guess, from, you know. Just from my perspective of what what they're saying there, so. And I know, and I I I'd be interested to hear what the economic commission has to say, just in the sense, because obviously. There's money coming back to the town and it just, it's kind of, it's kind of an interesting thought that. Will be selling, you know, somebody potentially selling um marijuana in the town and we're using that revenue for for the town. It's just kind of weird from, from my perspective, but I mean, that's what the the legislation is.
Good. Anybody else have any comments on it, questions?
I have one question. I was I was looking at this uh OPM, um, I guess, guidance or description of the the bill. And in the last paragraph there, well, the last two paragraphs, I guess, it's it's talking about how. Both retailers and the micro cultivars would be subject to like a special permit or other affirmative approval. But then down below, it says um that the intent is not to require a public meeting. I don't know, all of our special permits require, okay, so it's, okay, so I just, I'm reading that right, okay. Is that, is that actually what the the the, does it, does the act try to sort of sidestep the public hearing?
So I will have to go back and read when I, as I was, I got a little turned around when I was was going through um. My understanding is that there, that a minimum a site plan is required. I I got the impression that a public hearing was not encouraged through the act. But I didn't, I didn't see the exact language where it was either required or prohibited, if it was if it preempted that that local control. So I'll go back, so during the the write-up of this, I'll get you, I'll get you a better summary.
Okay, great.
One other thought was the uh, how many residents do we have in the town of Waterford as of right now?
Nineteen and change.
Yeah, right. Probably nineteen three quarters, something like that. So based on that, you know, it says.
One.
One of each. Does one retailer, one micro process for every twenty five thousand?
Correct. So you don't have to hit twenty five. So you get one up to twenty five and then up to the next tier, you get another one. Now, the question for the commission that we'll be looking at is what happens after twenty twenty four? When they reassess that element, right? So that's that's what you get in the beginning stages. But the it's a, there is, it is unknown what um what may happen subsequent to that. You know, some of the other, we've talked about um in terms of timeline and some of the things. And one opportunity for the commission is to discuss whether a moratorium for a six-month period or something else is. Is warranted while the commission sees how things play out and what the the options may be. So there's, there's a few different ways to approach.
So that would make, so whoever gets first in, in that assumes if this gets passed in whatever way it gets passed. So the first one who has the paperwork in would be the, would be kind of.
License is issued by the state, so they would have to, you know, um, they they can, they can come into us. And if it's already enacted in our zoning regs where they're in a location that's allowed, we sign off on it. They then have to bring that application to the state. Uh so we're not, we're not issuing the licenses, the state is.
But the first one to get all their paperwork in and and to get to the race race first, yeah.
Could be a race.
There's, there's a lot of, a lot of interest right now.
My 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 take on that thing that that you mentioned, Tim, was that if we required a hearing for a special permit, we can still do that. But that you don't have to have a meeting, is that?
The the nuance that I want to take a look at is is whether or not, uh, under, under this, relative to the legislation, under our regulation. Would we be looking at a a site plan with no special hearing or a special permit process in which a hearing would be required? Um, and I don't, you know, again, I I would, I want to go through and and clarify because as Tim was saying, that language is a little bit. Was was a little bit confusing in the way that it presented whether a hearing was required relative to a special permit.
Okay, just I, just.
Yeah, yeah.
If you want to read that, it looked like if you had to process, you could continue it, but you don't, they didn't mean to require a public hearing. Other than what you already have, it says. So just want to, we should, we ought to keep that in mind.
Yeah, I get the sense that maybe when they use the phrase special permit, they meant some kind of special permit for this use, not.
Yeah.
Uh capital S special permit.
Right.
Yeah, we got to look at uh, this is just their review. We probably got to look at that.
No, in the language of the legislation and and well, I mean, certainly we'll bring Rob Avina in for these conversations. We'll make sure that it's, it's very clear. Um, yeah.
Okay, so uh, got a good timeframe in in August meeting, get a, get a real timeframe of the meeting schedule for this. And and that time we'll have the Economic Development Commission opinion, maybe some. Research if there's is anything from the association or or something like that, model rules or something. So is that good for everyone? Yeah, okay.
Yes.
Okay, Karen, good. All right, that seems to be it. Is that everything for everybody? Great. Who's not here on the twenty uh, on the twenty fourth, anybody? I am here.
I'm here.
Yeah, I'm just double checking my calendar.
I should be here.
Okay, good. So yeah, Ken, did you say you're here?
I'm here. I just had one little, like, this, this legislation would be both, or could it be something that we could do recreational and medical? And one or the other or both or when we're when we're looking at the regulations?
Uh, no, it's 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 not, medical is not included in this. Medical already exists in our regulations. As a use of the Medical Campus Overlay District out by the Smilo Center. So that's already accommodated in the regulation. But if the commission wanted to take up medical as a separate issue, you could. I don't know that I would recommend. Overlapping them in this case because the legislation treats them differently. Um and so I would, I would be a little hesitant to to overlap. Too much and make modifications to the medical marijuana piece um at the same time as.
No, I wasn't, I was just asking in general, but what regulation is that in in there?
So in in our zoning regulation, in the Medical Campus Overlay District, there are provisions for medical marijuana um sales. So allowable by certain standards in that district.
Okay.
And that was done, I think, what, back in twenty fifteen?
Yeah.
And that's a use of that kind of conversation. That was a time in which the commission instituted a six-month moratorium when medical marijuana became legal. And then use that time to then craft the regulation that that was subsequently adopted.
Okay, great. Timmy, you here on the twenty fourth?
Uh, yeah, I should be.
Okay, great. So this looks like everybody will be here, so we can confirm a lot of those dates at that meeting. All right, great. So that's it, number eight.
That's motion to adjourn, so moved.
Yeah, great. All in favor?
Hi. Hi.
Hi.
Great, okay, creamy. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Good day.